Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:15 PM. I'll do a quick roll call. Trustee Hallwax?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Mielopolis?
Here.
Trustee Underdunk?
Here.
Trustee Rubin?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
And President Rowan, in compliance with the village's remote meetings policy, is joining us via telephone. Howard?
I'm President Rowan. I've got some public, so I'm not as busy as he is. As far as I can see, we have to leave. I'd like to ask the board to approve, Trustee Rubin, serving chair of the meeting, if he still is a trustee, so he still has a vote. But I have to do a roll call, so I have to put you through the chair.
I'll make that happen.
Second.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Mielopolis? Trustee Underdunk? Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, excuse me, that's it. Sorry, I got to the end of my list. Sorry about that.
So, Trustee Rubin, there we are.
All right. Let me feel better. Um, at this point, we are, just want to let everyone know, first of all, thank you all for being here. Appreciate that, seeing myself around. Uh, we're live streaming the meeting, and we posted the links to the livestream on the village's social media pages. And we will make recording available for tonight's meeting on the village's YouTube channel, on the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Uh, and at this point, if I could please have a motion to approve, uh, the minutes spoke for the committee of the full 17th, and the Board of Trustees' agreement.
Some of...
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, I as well, I'm motion passing. And this is a portion of the meeting that allows for anyone in attendance to address the Board regarding non-agenda items. I've requested any public comments that relate to agenda items be provided when we get to that item on the agenda. Well, comments should be limited to three minutes, and I'll notify a speaker of opinion about these comments. All right. Please. And if you could please identify...
Have the microphone, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, my name is Gary Lev. I live at 951 Forest. I've been a resident of Glencoe for 35 years. I had an incident happen to me a couple weeks ago, and I wanted to share with the Board, and then I'll leave it to the Board to delegate how to deal with it, okay? I bought a sailboat from my grandchildren who also lived in Glencoe. Uh, and I, you know, 30 years ago, I used to have a Hobie kid on the beach. Went down there just to see what was going on, and, uh, at the same time, my brother-in-law said, "Hey, if you see a used Hobie, buy it." Just like that. So, I talked to a fellow who's there, he goes, "I was on the north side of the beach." He goes, "There's some people on the south side of the beach, and they're selling a Hobie." Terrific. I go down there, and I meet this very nice woman, and I inquired about the sale of the Hobie, and she said, "Yeah, I'm selling my Hobie. I just purchased this next one over here." And I go, "Great." So, she's showing me the boat, whatever, and then, you know, I asked the price, and she gave me a price point that was a little bit high. Okay, but that's her, uh, you know, right. And she's giving me the fine points of the boat, which I fit several Hobies, because I used to have one there. And she goes, "Well, the main thing that you get with this Hobie is you get a spot." And I said, "What do you mean, you get a spot? Well, I'm going to sell you the boat, and then you can assume the spot that it's in." And I didn't say anything, because I didn't want to get into a beef with this person, nor did I want to flap any wings or feathers. Uh, but I, as I'm going home, I'm like, "Wait, wait a second. People went to jail for this in Chicago years ago for the harbors." And so, I called to the beach manager, and I said, "I'm inquiring, can I get a spot for this little beach boat that I grabbed for my grandkids?" "Well, there's a waiting list." "Oh, okay. But I can buy a boat, and substitute the boat, and do whatever I want, and now I have a spot." And I asked how long the waiting list was, and admittedly, the phone call is starting to break up, so I'm not sure I have my facts right. And he goes, "Well, there's a half a dozen people ahead of you." And I asked him, I said, "Well, they all residents?" He goes, "No. Uh, there's people, you know, they pay a little bit more." And I said, "Well, how did you develop these rules?" He said, "Well, I'm new to the job," and he was a very nice guy, don't get me wrong. "I've been on this job for a couple years, and I met with the members of the sailing community, and we developed the rules." And my first thought was that it's the inmates running the zoo, okay? It's to their advantage if they have a boat there, and they want to sell their boat, to be able to sell a spot. I suspect that the Board here is not in favor of someone who lives in another village being able to sell a spot to me, so that I can put my boat there. And all I'd like to do is have the right people task the manager, or anybody like that, because I think it needs to be addressed, because I had someone come to me who was a woman there, and said, "Hey, let's just pay up for the boat. We got the boat, your brother-in-law wants it, and we'll buy the spot." And I didn't buy into that at all, because that's not how we do things around here. I'll leave it with you, and I'll let you go ahead and delegate to where this should be going to, okay? Thank you.
Gary, thank you. Appreciate you coming and telling us. Um, yeah, this is a Park District matter. Um, this is a special meeting, and we need to ensure that it gets passed along to the Board. So, I know it's going to be a discussion, and we're going to have more than a minute to talk about it.
Certainly. And I'll share it also with the Park District Executive Director.
Now, we get to start our meeting, and we do the reports of committees. First, we do the report of the whole, I would view, and group, that I'm starting to find talking about. Do we do, potentially, at this pool, as a, uh, uh, issue of, you know, by our own project? And, uh, Mike's, well, sometimes, maybe we sort of sort of talking about how things are called, and making it, uh, useful, and more, you know, this type of meeting, as part of the season, and, uh, that discussion, uh, well, um, the next committee will report the meeting's committees, and that is not a lot, so, um, Tuesday's committee, uh, maybe you won't hear much of that, but we'll talk in August, and, uh, as it is in August, I know that important general fund revenues, uh, for a number of them, receiving both the, uh, budget targets, and probably, uh, including sales, import taxes, uh, carbon taxes, and, uh, certain, uh, budget, uh, and, uh, actually, hopefully, we will kind of, the greatest, uh, beginning start, especially, uh, the summer one, we're hoping a lot of people around here, uh, to get a boat, and get it, uh, to, uh, to, uh, water revenues, and strong, uh, uh, some, uh, big spending, but, and, once again, broad point, receiving expectations, revenue budget, several, uh, the only goal, uh, and other things, uh, more about that. Uh, expenditures, we generally do them at budgetary targets, uh, but, the fact of the matter is, we are seeing, uh, inflation, uh, supply chain issues, and we expect certain boats to be, not just this year, but well into next year, uh, which, could be increasing in the process of, um, the way, uh, that's, uh, going in, uh, for, uh, um, we, speaking with the also, uh, the, uh, issued capital funds, and, uh, we set the dead, and, uh, we provide, each of these, uh, we also, uh, allow this, uh, one year, uh, public safety data, and, uh, and, uh, we get, uh, we get, uh, that report, uh, and I reported, uh, and last week, we talked about, uh, the supply, uh, forecast, and, uh, we can never have a recovery, uh, and, that is expected, so, that's long, and, uh, there's a lot of discussion about, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the ways, inflation, what are the, uh, costs, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, and, uh, and, uh, you, uh, you, uh, speakers, uh, speakers.
Thank you very much. So, in August, the transition has met and continued with discussion of the comprehensive plan that we're working on. We are currently working on some small area studies, um, which include the Hubbard's Green Bay Road Corridor, downtown district, and the Highways Fronted District. Um, we spent our time in our office meeting discussing Hubbard Woods and Green Bay Road. Um, and when we look at that Hubbard Woods Green Bay Road Corridor, we're looking at it in three distinct areas. The southern section being the Hubbard Woods Plaza, kind of a transit-oriented area. Then the residential corridor, which is kind of the midsection, along, um, Green Bay Road. And then, at the north end, the downtown transitional area. Um, we were talking about Hubbard Woods Plaza, we definitely were talking about potential opportunities for multi-family housing, and commercial development there, and concluded that additional height allowances would likely be appropriate, and in line with the 45-foot height limit that's allowable in our Scott Valley. And for that residential corridor section, the midsection, we are of the opinion that some changes to the zoning code will be needed to better accommodate some small and woodside, multi-family developments, and, uh, the zoning districts, and, um, the current regulations have made it easier for, uh, potential projects to have moved forward. And then finally, in the downtown transitional area, the north end corridor, uh, we are of the opinion that the temperate parking lot should be considered part of downtown, because it is a part of the south end, and that also, this area, as it was transit-oriented, could be another area where we could see some additional height allowances, uh, in the section of Green Bay Road. And for our meeting that's going to be taking place, um, next week, we're going to begin discussing downtown, and, uh, discussing government, uh, housing, commercial development, accessibility, economic development, parking, uh, and, uh, uh, what can we, uh, and, uh, Golf Misery Committee met this last Monday, and the, the theme is, again, very similar.
The golf course is doing real well, as Trustee Rubin alluded to earlier. Um, on the season, or for the, for the month of August, rounds exceeded by 1,100, and beyond even rounds, it's, it's power cards, and it's also the driving range, which are, are doing exceedingly well. Revenue year-to-date is over budget by over $580,000. Uh, we've sold 1,200 senior memberships, which is a new record. And as we've mentioned several times, uh, there's the Clubhouse Ad-Hoc Design Review has, that, that committee has met twice. The next meeting is this Tuesday at 6:00. So, that, that, that committee has been tasked with going over what the exterior, uh, is going to look like in terms of, in terms of the new facility, and, uh, on this Tuesday, is starting to look at narrowing it down to the three selections, and getting the architect to create renderings. And then, about three weeks ago, that's when we had the, the opening for the, well, the croquet event, which was held on a Sunday, and was sold out and absolutely packed, and certainly was a wonderful new addition to the golf course and to, in selling memberships. That was, uh, something that was really, um, I think, really unique. You don't see many croquet courts anywhere, so it's nice to have another thing for people to come in the community and get to enjoy, uh, get to enjoy the new golf club and, and the, the club at Glencoe.
Uh, the Sustainability Cast Force leadership has been working with the STF members and village leadership to revise their sustainability vision plan. This plan will help prioritize future sustainability in the village. Um, next, at the last STF meeting, which was on August 22, um, we started planning, we started planning communication, excuse me, planning, communication, and educational efforts for next year. The STF chose six schemes that will be presented throughout the year. In general, these schemes will help residents value our natural habitats in Glencoe, reduce our local impact, and live more sustainably. The STF also reviewed the plan commissions all through Glencoe, graphic goals, and objectives, especially the goals involving, uh, integration of the community. We also started to explore partnership with the West School Student Council to find ways to work together on different sustainable initiatives. Uh, one example is boot, uh, for education. Um, last but not least, um, STF liaison, uh, staff liaison Jeff Loski, attended a sustainability meeting, hosted by State Senator Jimmy Morrison, along with State Representatives Jonathan Carroll and Bob Morgan. Uh, several municipalities and grassroots sustainability organization were represented, represented. The elected officials were interested to learn if there were any initiatives that could use some legislative support. These attendees suggested various initiatives, like recycling education, green infrastructure assistance, and reduction of single-use plastics.
Okay. The Glencoe Preservation Commission met on Tuesday, September 5th, at Village Hall. They first discussed a recap of the village board's preliminary approval of several actions that provide incentives and disincentives that benefit preservation. The commission was reminded that 25% of the homes in the village have been replaced since 1990. About 10% of the remaining housing stock has documented historic character, which really makes Glencoe a very special place. Only 3% have landmark protection. The commission was pleased with the village board's support, but adoption and implementation of the recommended actions will take some time. Unfortunately, applications for demolition are accelerating. There were four demolition applications for recommission review, of which the proposed demolition of 1035 Forest is problematic. This is an architecturally significant historic home in apparent good condition at a prominent location in the community. It would be a traffic loss, tragic loss. Currently, the demolition application is incomplete. The demolition permit may be issued after application completion, neighbor notification, a 60-day waiting period, and approval of new building plans. The commission recommends timely action of the recommended enhancements to the village preservation program, and will continue to explore ways to protect our unique historic heritage. The next meeting of the Preservation Commission will be October 3rd.
Well, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Uh, for the moment, everyone I think in the room has been waiting for very patiently, especially the youngest among them. Um, we have a couple of swearings in this evening, and I'd like to introduce interim chief Andy Pearlie, uh, who will introduce our new officers this evening before we administer the oaths.
Ben Newman joins the Glencoe team as a public safety officer after previously working for the village of Mundeline as a firefighter and paramedic for three years in the Beach Park Fire Protection District, or five years before that. Ben was eager to serve his community after moving into Glencoe when he first inquired about becoming a paid-on-call firefighter/paramedic last year. During Ben's time as a paid-on-call paramedic, he's always been helpful and an asset to the team. Ben was encouraged to apply as a public safety officer by his fellow colleagues. He comes to the department with his current certifications as a firefighter/paramedic. He'll be attending the police academy next year. Ben has a bachelor's of science degree in public safety management through Southern Illinois University, and he is joined today with his wife Paige, son Troy, his parents Susan, and Art, and parents-in-law Shelley and Craig, and... he was a police officer for one year. Prior to that, Joe was a supervisor for the Chicago Park District for four years. Joe attended and graduated from the Chicago Police Academy. He is currently completing an accelerated police training program, and he will be released to solo patrol soon. We look forward to adding his experience to our department. Joe has a bachelor's of arts degree in economics from the University of Illinois at Chicago, and he is joined today with his wife Jocelyn, children August and Avery, parents, sister, and a brother-in-law.
you. Thank you for joining us. Um, we look forward to having you here and being part of the team, and, as you've already seen, uh, this village, our community, places, uh, you know, a great deal of thanks with all of our public safety department, and we, we really do appreciate your service in being here for us. Thank you.
And I would just add, as Trustee Rubin mentioned, you are joining, what I hope you already know, is a pretty amazing group of individuals serving in a place that's pretty amazing, and we are grateful for those sacrifices that you make, and we're grateful for the sacrifices that your family makes to share you with us, and, uh, we look forward to the many, many contributions you'll make in service to this community and to one another, uh, and look forward to long careers here in Glencoe. Thank you. And you are, of course, of course, welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, or you're welcome to step out if you prefer to do that. We'll give you a beat for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have just a few other items, uh, to report on this evening. Uh, the next relates to, um, our preparations for the holiday lights that go up in our downtown, uh, every year. Um, as you may recall from our discussions around, uh, the budget last year, uh, the village made the commitment to transition all of those many, many tens of thousands of lights from incandescent to LED. Um, in the process of doing so, we have been working to remove the, uh, old lights, and we've also had to remove a few trees in the downtown, unfortunately. Um, we've also trimmed back all of, of our tree canopy in the downtown, so that they are healthy and, uh, prepared for the new lights that will be installed. Uh, we did purchase several thousand of those lights last year, and, uh, to make sure that they were, uh, ready for us, uh, to begin the process of, um, redecorating, uh, and getting the community ready for the winter months. And as we began to take those lights out of the boxes that they were shipped in, which all had identical packaging, uh, it was determined that many of those lights were not identical, and in fact, were different colors, not necessarily colored lights, but different shades of white, as well as different lumens. And, um, we are now in a situation where we have some quick acting to do in order to, um, be able to ensure that everything is ready for the Thanksgiving weekend, which is when, uh, the lights are officially turned on. Um, and unfortunately, we discovered this too late to be able to add an item to tonight's agenda, um, that would authorize the purchase of these, uh, these additional lights that we're going to have to, um, get our hands on sooner than we thought. Um, what that means is, I will be seeking from the Board, uh, next month, in October, a, what's called a confirming resolution, which would ratify, uh, a purchase in excess of my spending authority, which, as you may recall, is $25,000. We have gotten three separate quotes for this, uh, for these lights. We did have $50,000 budgeted in this budget. We did not anticipate needing to exceed my spending authority with the purchase of lights, but for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the fact that we need more than we thought we needed, and they're harder to get right now, we do anticipate needing, uh, to, uh, purchase about $49,900 worth of lights. Um, so, again, we have the resources in the budget. Uh, this is what I wanted to do tonight, since I was aware of this, was bring it to your attention, answer any questions that you may have, and if, um, there are no significant concerns, what we will do then is bring back a confirming resolution. I will tell you, if we waited until the October Board meeting, there's no way the Public Works Department would have enough time to get, um, all those lights out on the trees in, in the one remaining month that we would have. So, again, I'm, I had the opportunity to see you all tonight, wanted to share this and answer any questions that you might have. Yes?
The life, so, just like, um...
That's a great question, and, you know, I think that one of the myriad benefits of moving from incandescent to LED is not only are they vastly more energy efficient, they also have a significantly longer life. Um, I'm done, you can tell me better. Um, my... My estimation is that we have about eight times more life on the LEDs than we did on the incandescent. Yep.
Which is?
The difference between two or three seasons, up to times eight.
Okay. And another question, is there any recourse for us on the lights?
We are able to return them, thankfully, but because of the timing and yeah.
Separate issues.
Yes.
Just making sure.
But we will recoup, I should say, we will recoup a portion of that $50,000. Yep. Thank you. I should have mentioned that. Okay? Thank you all, and as I said, you'll see that confirming resolution next month on your, on your agenda. Two months ago, Communications Manager Sammy Hansel provided an overview, provided an overview of the results of the village's community survey that we conducted this past spring. As she noted at that meeting, the village's performance in the survey was exceptional and garnered us the Leading the Way Award from the ETC Institute, the organization that conducted the survey. That award is provided only to their top-performing communities across the country. Since the presentation took place in July, we've been working to build out messaging and share the information with the community. There is a dashboard that allows comparisons of the village's performance against our survey results from 2015 and 2019. That's available on our village website already, and we've been starting to share information on our social media platforms and e-news as well. While I had you tonight, I wanted to share a launch video that Sammy has created and edited and will be broadcast widely across all of the village's communications media. It's brief, a little longer than some of our other videos, but still brief, and I think does a really nice job of telling our story. So if John's gonna run it, apologies, you're not gonna hear it great, the sound system in this room isn't ideal, but hopefully you'll be able to still enjoy.
The results are in. We have your feedback and are ready to put this data to use. Let's see what the community had to say about Glencoe as it exists today.
Global changes leading to increased remote work in a growing business community in Glencoe could have influenced the increase in satisfaction in Glencoe as a place to work.
The data tells us a lot. Here are a handful of standout satisfaction ratings regarding village services.
Satisfaction with stormwater management went up 7% in satisfaction since last survey in 2019. This is a direct result of the nearly $2.4 million in stormwater management investments made since 2019.
79% of respondents say Glencoe is moving in the right direction, but there's always room for growth.
Respondents were asked to rank overall community priorities from a list of services and attributes. The top five priorities were: overall quality of life, crime prevention, quality of services provided, balanced village budget, stormwater management.
The survey asked questions specific to topics deemed to be priorities to residents. These include diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as environmental sustainability. Thank you for completing our 2023 Community Satisfaction Survey. Your feedback matters, and we're ready to put it to use. Although our satisfaction ratings improved since 2019 in the area of permitting, you're still telling us that there's room to improve, so we're taking this into consideration as we launch our new online permitting software this fall.
As the village prepares future budgets, your feedback is important in determining what service areas and projects will get priority funding.
We heard you on traffic enforcement, and we're aiming to do better. Help us in this effort by following the traffic laws and slowing down.
We're currently developing the village's new comprehensive plan. We'll use this data to help shape the new plan, which will impact Glencoe for the next 10-plus years.
Our strategic planning process will kick off in 2024. This data will be crucial in building our new plan.
Stormwater management is a priority for us, too. We're glad you see improvements as we continue to invest in critical infrastructure.
We pride ourselves in customer service. We're glad you think we're doing a great job, and we'll be sure to maintain high levels of service.
These results and more can be found on the village's website, www.villageofglencoe.org/survey. We encourage you to take time to explore them on your own. Thanks again.
So as I mentioned, you know, there's, there's a lot of data that the survey provided to us. This is a snapshot of it. We're gonna try, over the coming weeks and months, to continue to share the meaning of that data and the way that we are working to utilize it and integrate it into our thinking. I just want to thank Sammy again for, for pulling that together. As we sat to talk about how to present this information, it's difficult to distill into something that people want to sit and flip through multiple pages of data. While it's fun for me to do that, it may not be as fun for others, and we wanted to try to provide something that people would digest and, and review, and particularly not just to talk about all the great things that were, that we heard in the survey, but how we're gonna use it to help to continue to improve. So way to go, Sammy. Thank you. I know she didn't necessarily want me to show that tonight, but I, I think it was well worth it, and just a sign to some degree also of one of the improvement points, which was the village's communication, which ranked 10% higher in satisfaction this time than four years ago. And a big part of that is Sammy and the work that she's doing. So, hooray for everybody, and thank you. The last thing, and certainly not least, that I wanted to mention, you may have seen, if you follow the village's social media, that we announced yesterday the appointment of our new Public Works Director. Monica Sarna is that individual, and she will be joining the village on October 23rd. Her appointment followed a months-long recruitment process that included the members of the Public Works Department, our executive team, members of the village board, and, and other community partners, and I couldn't be more happy with the outcome of that process. She was part of the, the second round. If you'll remember, we went back out to the, to the market when we couldn't find our candidate the first time, and I will tell you, the second round of folks was a dramatically improved group. The individuals we interviewed in this second round were fantastic, and I think we are going to be very, very excited when she starts. She's gonna bring a lot of freshness of thought and ideas and capabilities to the position. And while we love Dave Mau and we miss him, and I think he's on vacation right now, we're grateful that Monica will be stepping in to continue the legacy that he led for such a long time in that role. The other point just to make quickly is the next time we all meet, we'll be swearing someone else in, and that will be our new Public Safety Director. Sean Loffern will be starting on October 5th, and we will formally swear him in at the October board meeting. So lots of exciting changes, all good, and looking forward to the, to the successes that it will bring. With that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Phil. Which brings us to the village president's report, and thankfully for you all, there's only one item on that agenda for me, but it's a good one, which is about to request a motion regarding a proclamation about Hispanic Heritage Month. But as I think most all of you know, it's September 15th to October 15th. That period is our National Hispanic Heritage Month. It's celebrated to highlight and celebrate the histories, cultures, contributions of individuals whose heritage is connected to Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And so with that, and a copy of the full proclamation is in the packet, of course, but with that, I'd like to get a motion to consider passing our proclamation declaring September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month here in Glencoe. And all those in favor? Well, an aye, and the motion passes unanimously. And with that, we move to our consent agenda. These include items that have been published online for everyone in the community to review, and they've been reviewed by the board members individually or together as part of our committee of the whole discussions. And we do not think they warrant any further public discussions unless someone disagrees, but there is one exception, which is Item 6B, which due to an equity interest that Trustee Scott has in one of our village's vendors, we'll remove that from the consent agenda and vote on it separately. This is being done simply to be as transparent as possible. Trustee Scott's interest in the company, and the company actually falls below the village policy requirements, but on the advice of council, she should recuse herself from the vote on that item. Given that, may we have?
No, you can stay. No, 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 you stay. You'll leave in a moment. We won't kick you out.
In case you want to know how technical this is, you just witnessed. Given that, is there a motion to remove Item 6B below from the consent agenda and then to approve the remainder of the consent agenda? All right, and now, a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax. Trustee Listner. Trustee Mealopolis. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Rubin. Trustee Scott.
All right. And now, as part of our regular business, if we could have a motion to approve check register for the village of Glencoe and the golf. All right, and if I could get a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax. Trustee Listner. Trustee Mealopolis. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Rubin.
Yes. All right. At this point, I think we can ask. She may come back. Unless Trustee Scott has made a run for it, she may come back in.
He's on our way out.
All right. Thank you. And now, if we could please have a consideration of an ordinance that amends our comprehensively and fine schedule to increase the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for honey butter fried chicken. And before we do that, I'd request our assistant for the village manager, John Capek, to talk this topic over.
Thank you, Trustee Rubin. Before you tonight, as you may remember from past liquor licenses, the section of the village code that permits liquor licenses has a specific number for each class, so A through G, various numbers, and until, I'm sorry, not before the village board amends that number can the village president, as his role as liquor commissioner, issue a license. So as expected, honey butter fried chicken, which is a proposed tenant in our downtown at 668 Verden, has submitted an application for liquor license. They've already gone through some of the preliminary components, like successfully completing a background check, as well as completing an application, and before you tonight is the consideration of that item. I would note that G2 is the class that they've applied for here. It authorizes the sale of alcoholic liquor, including beer, wine, and spirits, both on-premises and off-premises. The applicants indicated that in addition to the sale onsite for their guests, they also plan to have off-premises offerings, including takeout and catering packages. Under G2, they'd be permitted to do that so long as the liquor is in its original packaging and is sealed and labeled by the liquor manufacturer. That's a key part of this, and something that I'd like to get into just briefly here with the help of the village attorney, is that the applicants also indicated, not included in part of this approval tonight, but has also indicated a desire to serve to-go cocktails, which would be liquor that had been mixed or made on the premises, and, and as not being the liquor manufacturer, had not been sealed by the liquor manufacturers. That could be, again, a to-go craft or signature cocktail that they've then sealed in some tamper-proof way on their premises. And so this is a concept that the applicant requested. Staff has explored with the help of village attorney Steve Alrath in his office, and if he'd be so kind, he'll walk us through a little bit of that. Thank you. Yeah, there, there are other than, than G2 that currently allow off-premises, and so we would evaluate that as part of the ordinance. So again, I realize that that's not part of the consideration, but I wanted to make mention of it as it was part of the request from the applicant. It's something that staff's explored, and so, please. Sure, I think there's always a certain risk in liquor control that the village takes on. Ultimately, the state has already proceeded with, as part of that, part of the Liquor Act, the amendment to the Liquor Act, certain requirements for those to help abide them, right? So the tamper-proof containers is one of them. You know, in speaking to the applicant and into other liquor license holders in the community, that is a challenge that they're starting to overcome in terms of procuring tamper-proof, right? So things like rip seals or wax seals, something other than just a sticker that could be removed and put back on, right? That's to avoid, obviously, open containers elsewhere, but obviously, there's a certain risk in assessing that. risk in assessing that. That's right.
Do we have a sense of what our?
And again, the, the off, let me, let me reiterate, too. The off-premises that would be allowed under this would be manufacturers' sealed liquor, right? So, obviously, a can or bottle of beer, same with wine, but also a canned cocktail if it was manufactured by the liquor, as well as a bottle of vodka, for say, with a mixer separately, if that vodka was sealed by the, by the manufacturer as opposed to being sealed onsite. So, again, that would be part of the step that would be taken, taken into consideration with that.
Do we have a sense of what our neighboring communities do with this? Thank you.
I think everybody rec- So seeing that consensus, we'll work with the village attorney and his office to prepare that for a future village board meeting for consideration. Turning back to this item for tonight, I just wanted to make mention, joined here by chef and partner of Honey Butter Fried Chicken, Christine Sikowski, so we thank her for lending her evening with us and enjoying us. Give any comments or questions? Thank you.
Second.
All right, we get a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner. Trustee Mealopolis. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Rubin. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And thank you, John, and thank you, Steve. And now, if I could ask our Development Services Manager, Taylor Baxter, who's already at the podium, thank you, to present to us about the referral to the Zoning Commission of a proposed zoning code amendment that pertains to the golf course protective netting with this concept.
Thank you, Trustee Rubin. Those of you who were on the board a couple of years ago in late 2021, might remember this initial conversation which came to you back then about some plans that the Glencoe Golf Club has for potentially putting up some protective netting around the driving range out there, basically to keep balls from flying out, hitting cars, hitting people's front yards, et cetera. So this is a bit of a longstanding discussion with some longstanding plans. The outcome of that discussion in late 2021 is that our code does not really accommodate this as currently written. So we were beginning to explore some ways to help accommodate it, and that's what we're back here tonight to discuss, is these are plans that are continuing to move forward at the golf club. So there were a couple of different paths that we thought about, but the, the one we've settled on as likely the best path forward would be to amend the zoning code to allow these, or to allow them to be applied for at least. The first step in this would be to define a new use in the zoning code, which we would call something along the lines of golf course protective structure. With that defined in the zoning code, we would then add it as an allowable special use in all zoning districts. All three of our golf courses are in residential districts, so this is something we'd have to add in, in all zoning districts. They would be exempt as a special use from otherwise applicable setback and height restrictions. Fences now don't really have setback restrictions, but they're limited to typically four to six feet. Other accessory structures are typically 18 feet or less and have to meet setback, setback restrictions. So with a special use permit, they could potentially be allowed in a, in a setback and to be taller than either six or eight feet as a, as a fence, or 18 feet as an accessory structure. Again, no, with, with the zoning code is being proposed tonight, the zoning code amendment is being proposed tonight, none of this would be allowed by right. It would always need a special use permit, which is a public process with a public hearing. So whether it's the Glencoe Golf Club, or potentially sometime in the future, a private golf course, you have to bring a site-specific plan, school review, and a public hearing, opportunities for public comment, and also the opportunity for the Zoning Commission to recommend any conditions of approval, and the village board to potentially approve and include conditions of approval to help mitigate any potential impact. Again, this would apply to both private and public courses as currently proposed. We have heard absolutely no discussion from either of our private courses about any plans to do this, and the only place we've heard anything is from our old Glencoe Golf Club. So the protective netting process, there'd be two steps here, a zoning code amendment, we're in step A here, initial review. All zoning code amendments have three steps, an initial review by the village board where you can either say, "We don't want to do this," and it's denied, or you can refer it to, excuse me, the Zoning Commission for a public hearing and a recommendation. That's when public notice will go out. And then, after a public, a public hearing and recommendation, it would come back to you for a final decision on the zoning code amendment. If any of our golf courses, including Glencoe Golf Club, then want to have a site-specific proposal for such netting or any, or a protective structure, it'd have to apply for the special use permit, which is a two-step process, a public hearing with the Zoning Commission, that would be another round of public, of public notice, and then back to you for final review and decision on the special use permit. So where we are tonight is on 1A right now. A motion tonight potentially would be to refer to, refer the proposed zoning code amendment to the Zoning Commission for a public hearing and a recommendation, and if you'd like, you could include any instructions or directions for staff or for the zoning commission if you think that that would be appropriate. If that alternate mic over to the board. You, you would have to apply specifically for that netting in a specific location. That's right. That would be the special use permit application. This zoning code amendment would only be to allow that application and to be submitted. So, let's say, it would be site-specific, based on specific plans, that's what that- That's right. That's right. Yes. Certainly, that right now, the only, actually, the requirements by code are only that there's a published notice in the paper, but we always, for our special use permits, we send out written notice typically to people within 200 feet. We're also planning on sending that, although we don't typically do it for, for zoning code amendments, which are village-wide, we are planning on sending out public notice, assuming this is referred to the village, to the Zoning Commission tonight, we're planning on sending out written mailed notice to anyone who lives in, basically adjacent to any of our three golf courses for the zoning, for the zoning code amendment public hearing. And then if they came back for, any of our courses came back for a special use permit application, we would send out public notice then, public notice again. But if you'd like to give us additional, direction on additional public notice, we're absolutely happy to hear that as well.
I believe we need a roll call for this as well.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner. Trustee Mealopolis. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Rubin. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. At this point, I'll ask any other business. Then, may we have a motion to move into closed session pursuant to the following sections in the Open Meetings Act, 2C2 with bargaining, 2C21 related to approval of closed session minutes.
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call for this.
Trustee Hallwax. Trustee Listner. Trustee Mealopolis. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Rubin. Trustee Scott.
Yes.